So, most of that is already actually up there. The initial part of that is up on the website.
Okay.
What we can do is, we did meet just a few days ago. We do have some slight updates to that. We can post that up.
Okay.
And on an ongoing basis, we will continue to update, give periodic updates in terms of those various issues, how we're making progress towards. I'm sorry?
Are they under the board?
They're under the board. Yeah, they've been there.
I think the problem is that the climate service is...
Us, we may know as parents, but because we're here, but I think that the general feeling is that people might want to know where that information is and that work is being done on the climate study. I don't mean to interrupt, but that's, I'm just saying a lot of people might not know where to get that information. If there's somewhere that you can just...
So I think we can get an email update out.
Yep, we can get that out. Actually, one was sent out.
Any other alerts went out?
And I saw it went out with the link to the location, but we can do that.
I think whenever we make any substantive update, we'll just always send out alerts, say, new stuff. Please check it over. Give them a link.
We can do something like that. Actually, I'm just thinking about, we've been talking also about just kind of how to communicate regularly about various things. So, we'll make sure as we continue to talk about those, we roll some proper mechanism. Because one challenge is every, we do, we keep, one of the pieces of feedback we hear is that we keep sending a lot of information out. So I think we want to just be careful about, you know, not overloading the amount of information we push out just because we're making updates. So it's a balance.
Yeah.
I think we need to figure out the best way to do that. What I will share also is, just in terms of the board and items we've deemed as kind of the highest priority ones, we want to start addressing right away. There's seven out there. Again, we will list these out on the website. The first is, this is a jointly formed one, but the board has a role in it, is the definition of the escalation process. So the administration is taking a cut at what that should be. But we, as the board, need to buy into what that is, especially if items have to come up to our level. The second one is, the board will establish regular roundtables with parents and teachers. So we're proposing doing this once a month, having one session with parents, having one session with teachers, and having at least two of the board members present at any one of those roundtables. And then as time progresses, we'll see, do we need more or fewer or whatever in terms of the frequency of the roundtables. I'm hoping the first one we can set up is sometime right after the holidays in January. Number three is, we want to, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Elizabeth, if it's not in your space, but we want to update what the board responsibilities are, get greater clarity around those, and especially if in one format for that, we talked about it last time, is create an FAQ. That you were going to necessarily create the FAQ, but I think...
Yes, you mentioned that part.
Yeah.
We did, we are making some...
Sure you did, yeah.
It's done.
Oh, okay. Perfect, okay, great. Thank you. Sorry for being late. Number four is to, and I think work is being done in this case also, in terms of surveying, I think it makes sense to, we want to make sure we leverage a third party to do our surveying because we not only have kind of a third party, but you also get benchmarking capabilities there. So we really get a sense of where we stand on that. Fifth is tie into, and we've called it a let's talk proxy process. So we've talked about potentially using let's talk as a mechanism.
We've already, that was discussed earlier.
Okay. I'm sorry?
I believe that's gonna be...
It's not what we...
You know, so we were calling it a proxy. So whatever we go with as a solution to do communication, we want to make sure there's a facility to communicate with the board also in that context.
Community electronic or...
Correct. The sixth item is effort to have quicker turnaround time on complaints. So when complaints do come to the board, our default position should be to resolve them as soon as possible as opposed to resolve them, you know, when we have, absolutely have to, at the latest possible time. And the seventh item is to post progress on these items on the website. So keep updated here in this form, but also make sure they're regularly posted as they are resolved on the website.
Is this concerning complaints or something else?
Oh, I'm sorry, concerning implementation issues.
Progress on their presentation.
Can I ask clarity on number one?
Yes.
Escalation process, is that the end process?
Well, it could, I think it's broader than that. So it's when there are issues, having clear definition of who do you go to for what. Now, I think there are multiple levels of that, so that, you know, there might be minor issues, like, okay, an electrical problem, who do I go to? We're not necessarily talking about those. Eventually, all of that needs to be timed. And for more specific issues, what is the escalation? Do you, if I'm a faculty member, do I go to my department? And if I still have an issue, do I go to whom, 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 and so forth? And ultimately, if there are issues that need to come to the board, what's the mechanism for that?
Can you give an example of an issue, though, that's an electrical problem?
Well, I think it's some of what Dr. Demello was talking about earlier, that sometimes parents just don't know where to go and trying to create that matrix. Is that, is that aligned, kind of what, I think, I mean, just be general, just use the term as well, thanks.
Well, like the question I had one time was the enrollment process. It's like, why are you changing the enrollment process? Okay? They should, they could know to have gone to the registrar without, to ask that question and see if, you know, back to the situation. Just so you could have a page that said, you know, registrations, enrollment, lottery. Now, if somebody goes and thinks, oh, okay, that's what my question has to do with, that's the category. I click on it, and that will automatically link me to the right person's email or to a phone number. You can have contact information there as well, so that information can get addressed. That's a kind of connection then. An escalation would then be just kind of a basic org chart, almost like the org chart, right? So that if it went there and you didn't get your answer, well, who was that person's supervisor, right? Who also has papers? So then we go to the next person, the next person. So just so that people understand, in some instances, understanding what the org chart, the flow chart is right here. And some of that, we've talked about this a lot, there's more clarity that needs to come around some of that because again, you know, what was happening a few years ago when ANSA was a baby versus now a teenager, with someone put up, which I like that analogy, now, now the board...
Chris, and to your, more directly to your point. I don't know. Is it, I think what was, I don't know. Is that what we've asked is Dr. Demello has been designing kind of the process and proposed it was, and we're gonna have to make sure it's okay for when it goes beyond heard of us. And Pauline's question was, would that result in a complaint? Like, and it might, I mean, I, I don't know. Yeah, I'm not sure if that would, we have to think about if that's the...
So it's possible that finally the complaint would be one of the things in the flow chart? Like, if you don't have the satisfaction here, then your next step is to file a formal complaint?
Yes, it could be, and that would be the final step.
Right. But primarily, basically, the premises, though, right? So a, almost everything would go to the executive director.
Right.
It's complaining to the executive director. Then you go to the board. So if it had to, with respect to that, but most other things really come under management.
Yes, yeah, we're only talking about what goes beyond, what comes to the board.
Okay.
And Pauline's question, that automatically becomes a form of complaint.
I guess because, what we said for number one, though, is that we're both having to work on this because we also have that same issue previous to that. So we haven't lived school culture as well for an escalation process for us as well.
Yes.
Multiple layers. Yeah. And for parents, too, there's, that's another realm. So all of those things need clarity.
Is there anything else? Was there anything else you had?
Those are the main items. And Demello wants to add anything in terms of progress that...
She gave it.
Oh, she did, right. Wonderful.
So I'm gonna take a time check, it's quarter to nine. We've got several things to go over, still in executive session, so we'll begin to move the meeting along with the thing. We are going to a finance committee or...
There is no finance committee.
No finance committee. So let's turn it over to the conference committee.
Yeah, I think I could skip some of these. I mean, the board recruiting, we have, we obviously nominated candidates, we have another candidate in pipeline that's up to nominate in January. The policy change request is, we can refer, I think, to the next meeting to discuss. Roger was planning to give a, giving an open OML presentation. How long would that be? And we talked about if times we want to...
I think it's ten minutes plus questions.
Do you want to look through what else we have to do? And the other, the final thing was just the January planning meeting preparation, which was that email that you all got from me like I did last night when I finally assigned all the tasks to prepare for our January offsite. So if there were any questions about that process.
I'm sorry, does the date been established for that?
The January meeting is January 22nd.
It's in the calendar.
And that's actually normally an offsite meeting that starts at five o'clock. It is in the calendar that one, which I highlighted that.
I think it's offsite, but that is still a problem?
Yes, it's all board meetings.
Where is it?
Don't worry.
See, that's, that's been a problem the last couple of years in January. Just saying.
It's generally at the same place, right?
Although it's different.
Where's the same place?
The rest of us don't know the same place.
It's been at workforce options.
So it will be on the website?
It'll be on the website.
Okay.
So the half, the half place now, right?
I have a question, why is it off the website?
I know, but it wasn't posted at the minute. It wasn't posted at the...
For me, this time, probably is involved being able to...
Is that a regular...
Move to a different environment just to have, think about long, just sort of being in different places we can suggest long-term.
It's all like planning issues and not...
Long-term, exciting issues.
It's a retreat, so it's, we get away from the usual digs. It's the thinking.
I mean, it's been held at four picks before. The last couple of years has been at...
Here. Recruitment options.
So they're all in there a mile, basically.
Yeah, they're all, they're all here.
It's at the five thirty, five?
It's dark, but it's been at five, yeah.
Yeah, let's start it at five, several hours in a meeting.
I mean, it's not much...
Or even earlier, given the quantity of material we're probably gonna look at.
I have a question if you can make that. It's, I mean, it's a good four hour, at least four hours of agenda. Where we normally make agendas like two hours and then go four hours, so like this is a, this is four hours, so it goes longer than four.
So let's start at five. And how are we on any down locations? Is the school on here again?
No, I haven't been asking, you want me to, yeah, you could start it.
Yeah.
And then we can post early.
Yeah. Make sure it's posted.
So, just ask, is it, is it at all feasible? I know everybody has a day job, but is it at all feasible to start it earlier? And the reason I ask is, it's meat and end of day, people aren't, people don't make the decisions with that time. There are a lot of decisions, potentially, a lot of strategic thinking.
We've done it on Saturdays and Sundays.
It used to be Saturday morning, yeah, you could have it morning.
I'm open to that.
I would consider that.
Because I think that's, that's better than doing it at the end, it'll retire.
Yes.
Yeah. Actually, I think it's Saturday morning, probably.
The challenge with Saturday morning is that Martin Luther King weekend just before, and so trying to get it scheduled, it's always been, my understanding is that it's always been...
So can we do it the Saturday afternoon?
Yeah.
Twenty-four.
I'm gonna be, here we go.
Yeah, I know, probably my house, too.
Yeah, I'm out of town.
Yeah, so the Martin Luther King holiday is the nineteenth?
Yeah.
What about the eleventh? I'm sorry, it's a Sunday, the tenth. Do I hear any screams?
January tenth, okay, we're close.
Yeah.
I can't do that.
It's Saturday morning when we're talking, yeah.
No, I can't, I just...
Yeah, it feels like an eight to twelve week.
I can't do it, I can't, I can't.
You can't do it, too. That's why we haven't been on Saturdays.
Yeah, I mean, this is the problem that we ran into, which is why we've been at...
But could we, could we try to do it, start at three?
Could we get our, with a one?
One on the Saturday?
No, no, one P M on the, on the, one second.
Well, she came to, fuck, the school came to one.
School is over, right?
Yeah, okay, so three.
School's not quite over, very. If we go out and out, we'll be up till at least four o'clock.
If it's just me, though, I mean, I can improvise.
Can I get out at three? She just said you can't.
No, I'm saying if you wanted to start early, we could provide a substitute for her.
A substitute for me?
I actually don't like that idea because it, it's an open meeting. People from the school should be able to go to this. They shouldn't have to attend school hours.
It's in four o'clock, would probably be the earliest that people have to.
So, did we want to look at any more Saturdays, or are we done with Saturdays?
I think that's all over January, unfortunately.
Well, it's thirty-first.
But we didn't look at the thirty-first.
Ooh, my council, there's no events on the thirty-first weekend.
So the thirty-first, it's the only Saturday that we didn't explore, Kim, and I appreciate your joining the board and helping us.
So is anybody can't make Saturday the thirty-first? Once or twice, your life is ours.
He's not serious, he's just trying to date it every day.
Saturday morning at eight o'clock is always, eight to noon.
So is that instead of the twenty-second?
Saturday morning at eight o'clock? Thirty-first?
We have eleven board members that can, that can't.
I know, but you can...
I don't know if these travels weekends doesn't...
No, he's usually back by...
Let's take the thirty-first. I think, thank your suggestion that people are fresher, they haven't been out all day, is a good one.
I think we should plan for more than four hours, so...
Yeah, I agree.
Eight to two.
Okay, I'll just say it. Are most members of the public gonna be able, I can make eight o'clock, I don't have a problem with it. Most members of the public, they'll make eight o'clock.
It's part of the business day.
They might even be more available. Who knows, you might not have anybody, they didn't even...
Yeah, I think it's, we said six or seven in the morning, that one, just because it's not part of the business day.
I think eight is reasonable.
School starts at eight, it feels like it's at times.
So we've got an agenda, but it's probably that we need to one.
So thirty-first, is this instead of or an addition to that?
Instead of. I know, but I...
So is it instead of January twenty-fifth, I'm waiting?
So it's Saturday the thirty-first at eight o'clock?
Yeah.
Think of being on that thirty.
All right.
Excuse me, Craig.
Yeah.
Do you want me then to start looking for a location?
That would be great.
And are you wanting the same thing? Do you want any coffee, food or something, because one day we can't have a day?
Lots of food.
Lots of food. I mean, workforce options was fine, not, one year we were in that little room, which is a little work, we have too many people, but we definitely are gonna need the, you know, workforce.
Four.
I don't think that one would be big enough.
Yeah, I think even if that conference was small.
You know, the special events is really nice.
Oh, yes.
I don't know if that's available. Oh, the international, yeah.
Yeah, they were conferences.
Those are two good suggestions.
All right.
So that's, do you want to do the family survey, then come back to it?
Yeah. And that, that was, we'll see.
Well, do we want to spend the time on both of these? Family survey and open meetings, like, how long do you think we're on for family survey?
It's pretty long.
I think we've got the other side we have to do.
Roger, why don't we, in our January meeting, go through open meeting?
Works, right?
I think we'll need a break from planning, and that would probably be a nice way.
It's such an exciting topic that everybody's ready to just dive in and talk on it.
We may have a new board member by then, too, so...
Yeah, we'll have another board member to, to write up these two.
I hate to be a chariot here, but do we really want to take time on the planning session to go through? How long is the open meeting?
Ten minutes.
Ten, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not two hours.
You'll do it while we're having lunch.
Okay, so let's move on to the location.
So the education committee doesn't have any updates, but during the education committee's section, we will give an update on the family survey results.
You're trying to reject the notion of ownership.
Probably, why are these here?
Well, I don't know if we're even gonna be able to reject.
Okay, in the meantime, Craig, there's no fundraising. You got one else?
Or do you have, do you have a meeting scheduled for next fundraiser meeting?
January sixth, first Tuesday and every month thereafter.
Somebody can help.
I have one extra question.
There's some on the floor, but it's, it looks like it's more than Michael on the side.
They have, it wasn't right here, I wonder if they...
Yeah, blue is the wrong, yeah.
I just want to... Yeah, I'm gonna get the red stuff.
So, if we can get a couple copies out to the public while we walk through this, can you guys follow on this one?
Oh, I actually have.
Rather than rejecting, rather than rejecting? Do you have a couple copies?
I have, I have just two.
I think they'll share.
You want to share?
I'd like to share.
Oh, that's our package.
You and I could communicate.
Oh, no, I don't need, I can look up.
So we launched a school survey in late November, it was only a big survey. We were four weeks, we closed on December first. We had two hundred and thirty-two respondents. That represented about four hundred and twenty-five students. Last year, we had about, the total, it was about five hundred families. So the respondent base has gone down.
Fatigue.
And the overall objectives were to measure overall satisfaction with ANSA culture and academics. That's something that we look at every year. Understand satisfaction in programs, specifically plus portal. Understand current concerns regarding homework, which is something that came through that we identified that we needed to keep on the survey. Some of the things in summary that the administration and the board of trustees should consider is that, as a board, we still have some work to do to rebuild confidence with the parent community. That was rarely relevant or obvious in the open comments section. The parent community does not sense much change since last spring. Parent community articulated concern with science in quantitative and qualitative sections. So I thought that was something that we, I needed to highlight. And there's a need for improvement in communication from the school and from the faculty. So not only communication that's coming from the administration, but teacher communication with parents. So that was my overall summary. Now, what I did is, the, the general questions that we ask annually, I created a slide for each one of those, and I included the results from fall 2013, spring 2014, and this year's result, I mean, this last result, so you can see the shifts and the changes. So in terms of academic characteristics, this is where we added a question where we broke out math and science. So in the previous two surveys, we asked about the quality of math and science instruction. This time, we asked them separately, and you can see there's a big variance in terms of what respondents are saying about the two disciplines. So that, I tried to see if there were any, if you could correlate what was going on in terms of what grade students were at, and the main concerns. So I looked at just the very unsatisfied and unsatisfied, or coming with families who have students in seventh, ninth, and eleventh grade. And I know there's been some transitions with physics teacher, and so there might be just things that are really top of mind for parents, and that might be leading to this, or it might be overall experience.
So what is that number in red between very satisfied and satisfied?
That is if you take very satisfied and satisfied.
The top two boxes.
The top two boxes. So satisfied plus very satisfied.
Bring it back.
Yes. I think that, so one of, we had a question about the mission. And eighteen percent of parents still do not believe that ANSA is preparing their children for success in high-tech world. So that I thought was something that, you know, as a board, we should pay attention to. And then if you move on to school culture, again, the same thing. So here I try to see if there was any correlation.
On that eighteen point one percent?
Yeah.
There was a specific question on that?
So there was a question that stated that ANSA mission is blah, 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 blah. Do you think ANSA is preparing your child to be successful in the high-tech world? And these are, and these parents said no.
Okay, was that a question, though? Why is it not?
It wasn't part of that, I just thought that in terms of academics and fulfilling the mission, it's that it belonged to you.
And that was a yes-to-question?
Yes, that question, yeah.
Is that the only part of the mission statement that was on, because the mission statement's pretty long, so I'm just...
The whole mission statement was there, and that was the question that was asked.
So that's just one. High-tech world is just one part of it, maybe other parts of the mission statement weren't really filled.
So it needs to be something later.
That's all we asked.
Just that one line?
We asked if parents felt that ANSA was preparing their children for success in high-tech world.
In my reading of the, I think it's the open responses, there was one comment that related to that, and it really sort of refers to the science department, which basically was sort of like the basis of that question, at least in the one that I read, it made reference to the science department.
I, I mean, we'll get, we'll get into the open comments, because I tried to summarize those, but that's I could. But, again, most of the survey has been the same survey, and we've been doing it year over year over year over year. So when I, all I'm doing is trying to compile data, and I made some changes, but we split out math and science. Other than that, I haven't made any significant changes, except for adding a few more questions that are coming up.
Okay, and just to clarify, this eighteen point one is one of those three questions, so...
Absolutely, just to clarify, this is not a third party, this was just our own.
This was just our own, in the interim, we wanted to make sure that we continued to have some information to review. So when I came to school culture, what I noticed is that, you know, time for recreational outlets was low, and I wanted to see if there was any correlation with grades, like students have too much work, homework in a certain grade, and that's because they can't get to it. And then I also looked at extracurricular activities. So student, there was no correlation, because my assumption would be is they have, they have, they don't have enough time, so that's why they're not doing it. But they're all, the parents of the same grades were also saying their kids don't have enough options for extracurriculars. So if they had more options, they would make the time. So did, I couldn't find any correlations, basically. I was just playing with the numbers to see if there was anything that would show that, no, there's a trend there, but...
Ask, I don't know how far you'd look at third-party survey facilities? I'm sorry, you have?
I have not.
I have not, because that, as you bring in correlation, that would be an interesting thing to, to understand from the third parties, do they have capabilities when they ask questions to make correlations?
Yeah, see where the themes are, yeah.
Very nice to see safety as the highest one, I feel like that's something we make a priority in the search.
Most of these have, I mean, most of these have improved, but there's still, you know, there's still some areas for... So partnership with parents, so this is what, these are some of the new questions that I added. And it's really, you know, parents know the need for improved communication regarding student academic progress, progress, of course. So that is really... So that is really, my, the feedback down here is really what I was reading in the open comments. If anybody, time to read all my two pages. This is some of the themes that I saw and you can see how it translates into the quantitative. And then in terms of learning and supporting students in the classroom and supporting parents when the students get home, you know, I think there's some, there's some opportunity in that. That school helps me to understand how best is for my child's learning at home. So, and this was spread across all grades. So it wasn't that we are helping supporting students in lower school, but we're not helping supporting students in upper school. It's across all grades. So I think this, if you read through the comments sections, there could be a lot of very, you know, a lot of, a lot of parents' comments around flipped classrooms. So maybe they don't feel confident in this way of teaching and that makes them feel insecure and unable to help their children. Or it could also be that the information is not on the plus portal. This teacher's work, plus portal is great, but this one isn't updated and I don't know how to find the information. So there's different, there's different reasons why they can be, they can be... So homework, most parents say it's just right, but we still have some that will let it's way too much or not enough. Communication has improved this spring, but teacher communication has seen a deep decline. Overall, communication from all parties can improve.
I wonder if communication issue around plus portals, and I know there's quite a few comments due to the whole thing. That's, you know, that's a new thing for us as well as for parents. So, you know, I think we're all still on a learning curve there.
Yep. So the faculty staff performance, so really it's first we identify if they've contacted these people. If they've contacted any of these people. So, and if they've contacted them, what if they're satisfactory? And how that works. And then again, plus portal, people are using it basically to monitor their good child's grades. But there's a, there's a concern that there's a lot of consistent use by teachers. And that was about 56.5%. That was a secondary question that I just pulled in while in preparation.
So, now listen before you run off there, faculty and staff performance? This section?
Page ten? Sorry.
So is this improving or largely the same or not as good?
It's, I mean, some areas have improved, some areas have not. I would say, I think department chair and guidance were the areas where it has declined.
The rest are pretty similar, other than secretary director and coach, both of those have gone up. And everything else is two or three points different? Is there a bunch of comments? Sort of?
There is, there's a section. I don't know.
There's a section of comments later on?
There's a section on guidance. I don't, I only dive as far, I mean, I don't go into every single...
Okay.
I only go into, I think I had more than 10 comments.
There was quite a few comments on guidance.
There are eight comments on guidance.
Yeah, I read through all the comments.
There is.
Very enjoyable.
The one that stood out for me, I think was mentioned the department chair. That one seems to be down.
Pauline, do you have a plus portal open? This slide has a plus portal.
It didn't have a percentage on it.
Yeah, I do. Oh yeah, I didn't say monitor my child's grades. What's the question?
I would, it looks like eight, three, five.
Looks like almost 100.
How many do you do?
Eighty-three point five.
So then, before we get to open responses, so in terms of board of trustees, understanding the role of board. So this time they added the question, this is the role of board, which is what the board was. So 90% agree, 84% on the chairman, where they can find the documents, so that's good. 50% have attended a board meeting in the last 12 months.
That's very high.
Very high.
Fifty percent of 232 people.
Although I suppose it's...
We can't enter his last 12 months.
I also think that people who attend board meetings are the type who are likely to fill out the survey. So it's...
Also the people that would hear when we would do in the interim, ED.
Yep. 90% understanding the role of the board. I thought that was a striking number, too, because that number last fall was 42%.
Well, we have two different ones.
So...
You stated the role and then you said the...
This time they just stated the role.
With the yes no answer, yeah.
And you know what? If they didn't, if they didn't really understand it when they, before they started the survey, they understand it now, so it was an opportunity to share. Fifteen, yeah, exactly. 15.9% have attended a subcommittee meeting.
Pretty huge.
So overall, you know, we don't go into the ser, there's questions about, you know, the comments about the survey and the survey had questions on it in the last three months and in the last 12 months. So in terms of a board, we felt it was necessary to measure, you know, what we've done and what people did in the last 12 months. But in terms of the administration, right, and to the teachers, we really focused on the last three months because these are the, this is the staff that's here today. So I know there was a lot of parent comments on that and I just wanted to publicly say that, you know, really what we're measuring is what people have been doing in the fall. Right? And how they can improve moving forward. We can't measure what people that aren't here. So in open response, there were total of 94 comments. Two comments were not included at all in the summary or in the overall. One was blank and one was very student-specific. It wasn't, it was specifically about experience. I just, I didn't feel it was necessary to put it in. Names of teachers have been blacked out. Names of past administrators or current lead administrators have not been moved or felt that, you know, in that position, it's okay to have their names in there. And our names are, if any of your names, your names are in there. Most parents did a really good job of not putting names and just identifying. Josh just...
The little thing that you put the shoes to.
The little something.
These comments like, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And most people did not put their children's names. That was good, too. Comments were summarized by theme for easier consumption. So I read through every comment. Now, if a comment had four or 20 parts, those parts were divided out into the themes. Now, if, if it had six parts, but they all fell into one theme, it's still one. So that you know that came from one area. So I thought that it was important not to break them out. That, I mean, everybody can read into it however they want. I just tried to make it easy for us to really review the information. So there were, I had one, two, three, four, five, six. 12 themes that I identified. And then I have just one page of a little bit of a summary of key points of themes that had more than 12 comments. Okay? And then these, the themes are ranked in terms of the number of comments. And everybody received the comments, so you had an opportunity to read all of them. Excellent. So overall comments, you know, of experience, general satisfaction. There's a lot of people that just said, you know what? I love AMSA. That was good. That was really nice.
Positive satisfaction.
There was some positive satisfaction there, yes.
In fact, if you read just that, you were done. Wow, everything's perfect.
Just read the first 24, no. But, you know, there was concerns about collective bargains. So that, you know, that, those are some general, in the general comments. Concerns about staff turnover and overall direction. So those were the things that, you know, people would say, I'm really happy with AMSA. I'm worried about this or what's going on with that. So I really felt those were like, this is how I feel about my overall experience and that's why I belong there. So those were about 24 comments. Homework and teacher communication, 19 comments. And I, at first I had homework separated from teacher communication, but then it was, it all felt like it really belonged together. Inconsistent use of plus portal or lack thereof. Some people said that, you know, they felt that it wasn't being used at all. Homework. Some people believe it's too much, others not enough. But others have concerns about the quality of the homework that their children are receiving. So is this busy work? Is it, are they, you know, is it really valuable time that they're spending on this homework? Teachers are not responding or communicating about issues proactively. I don't remember why I wrote this.
Somebody must have said...
Somebody must have said something.
Yeah, there were a few on the...
There were a few comments like, teachers don't, I don't know, hopefully, or things like that.
All right. So academic experience slash concerns. So there was a lot of comments about the science department, future of computer science, quality of the instruction, loss of teachers, the teachers that are here. There's a lot, there's a lot of various different types of comments. So I would just say, you know, we need to take, not we, administrations need to take a look at that. And concerns about flipped classrooms and use of TAs, teaching assistants.
The overuse of TAs?
No, just the use of TAs. Concerns about...
If I can just clarify just on that, on that one. We've made adjustments from the beginning of the year in how TAs are being used and put new protocols in place as to how they now being used.
Okay. Communication from school. So there was lack of communication regarding progress reports. There was a couple of comments about that. I know that. There was lack of communication about personnel shifts. I know that some of these things cannot be communicated, but... Lack of timely communication. I think this was the snow or the report cards. I'm not sure. Board of trustees. 13 comments about the board of trustees. So overall, dissatisfaction of the board's performance and that we don't view parents or students as customers.
Did most of those were negative?
No. There was comments about board composition. New members were positive, stop. You were not named, but it was you.
Gosh.
Parent, the number of parent members is a negative and the lack of education, like true experience and educational...
The number of parent members is a negative?
Yes.
Are there too many or too few?
Too many.
Too many. We should have, yeah, too many. Either we should have none or there was just too many. Lack of, yeah, lack of, like, somebody here that has just educational experience to really support the ED and support the board.
I heard that in focus, I mean, a lot of this really mirrors what I was supposed to talk about. There was also comments about sign, folks were looking for more science math expertise on the floor. Scientists. Well, scientists, yeah.
All right, cultural climate.
I did understand that molecular biology thing. I didn't understand anything else, but I understood that.
Yeah, but you couldn't add like 82 and 12.
I know.
Okay, so the last one was just general cultural climate. There were about 12 comments. So there's a general sense of connoisseur results are not being addressed. So I think any update that you can share is going to be great. Concerns about specifically administrative or lack, and a lack of a principal. And then this one that the school is not warm or inviting to students. And there was, there was a couple of comments about the media center policy and high schoolers having access to the media center and not having to pay. I know, I remember this came up in the past.
Pay that 10 bucks.
Huh?
That 10 dollars.
So, those were, I mean, I did my best to...
It's a lot of work to get...
I had to access the internet. Five hours.
I'm reading. I'm sure you all read it.
Let's, let's have a few minutes discussion on what do we do with the survey response. It's a lot of information. We're just going to be digesting it for a little bit still, but...
I don't know how many of these things are board things, including the media policy.
There's a bunch, yeah.
Right, that, I mean, I guess with your parents, so I can understand that. I got to know, looking at this, I don't know much of these words. Can someone just tell me what that means? What is media center policy? So there's, the kids, if they stay after school, they can't just hang out in the library. They have to pay a dropping fee because that's staff. So there's no point, which kids can just come after school and do research for free, I guess. So that's, some of the comments that like other high schools, kids can use the library after school for free and... Yeah.
I think maybe, I would just say, I would just say that a lot of these, a number of these comments are related to the operations of the school.
Yeah.
And so maybe if we took the same tack that we're taking of the cultural... Great, thanks. Getting laid on it. Maybe took the same sort of thing and made an approach to say, let's triage these and group them. It's either, it's a school board or both.
Yeah.
And decide which bucket all of these fall into.
I think also a lot of these things were, mirrored some of the things that were already coming out of the faculty culture report. So and things that we are, that the board has already done, like the idea of the roundtable could address this point dissatisfaction with the board's performance. Don't view parents as students as customers. So, you know, if we have more roundtables, then maybe that could, that that...
Order for roundtables.
Yeah.
I love the idea of the roundtable.
Yeah, and I think there's lots of these that are actually within the culture and management practices and implementation, I suppose. And then there's lots that are operational. And some are great ideas for roundtables and that sort of thing. Maybe what might be worthwhile is if we ask Dr. DeMello to look and categorize maybe the themes in terms of fully within the school's control. And these are things that are ongoing, that you may not be aware of. And these are things for the board, or these are things for you. So I think, you know, I'd like to give you a first cut at it potentially. To come back and say, yeah, I'm categorizing classified all these. We can take action on these. First of all, here, we're board, these are yours. And some of them are great ideas for roundtables, I think. Is that something you become? Kind of the themes, yeah. And, you know, I think all of these themes map back to data as well.
But a lot of them map to interventions that we've just begun or decided we're going to do. So there's nothing to be done.
There's, there's nothing to be done other than to map it to something.
Map it and then see what happens in the spring.
But we know that we're not dropping the ball if there's a mapping. But now we've got one of the board members doing it. She's by, I asked Dr. DeMello, because she's familiar with the operations of the school.
I know that the use of plus portal wouldn't have come up in this regard, obviously. I know that it's something that I definitely can do a better job at, so as a... Yeah, I don't know. Try it. But it was inconsistency in headline. I mean, it was the same.
Just replaced you.
Right, yeah. But it's not something that you would have heard from the faculty. Sometimes I'm very consistent with this. Sometimes I'm like, we're probably not... You're right. So that's a family. You're saying that's a family.
Right, there could be a lot of things that are family things.
Right. That's a family thing. The media better, the family.
Right.
So if that's okay with the board, I would ask them to test Dr. DeMello with coming back to us with kind of a mapping. And if there's things that stand out from her read of the survey that she would like to reinforce with us, I think that's probably fair to do. That's the next step. I don't, we're not going to get to that in January. So that's a February meeting task.
Craig, how do we, how do I bring to this conversation all the content that I heard in the focus groups last? I think I can, you know, this is, so I'd say group those areas and start to say, okay, let's go after this. I have a lot of color I think that I could also add, right? So I read a lot of the open comments, it's very similar, but I heard more people expanded on this.
Talking about some of these things.
Yeah, and so I just, I think there's probably an opportunity to get that baked in. So I don't know what the answer is, but I think...
Can you talk to Dr. DeMello about that?
What?
Should you talk to Dr. DeMello?
I could. I mean, I could, I'm asking, which is from a process standpoint. I mean, I've got a lot of color, I think, on these.
I could see the thing. I like, I like the idea that you can definitely have to engage with Dr. DeMello and see how these two line up. We could also report to the board in either January or February as to the results of your findings, summarize.
So summarize.
Do you, so all the color, is that something that's worth publishing or something?
Well, it, you know, it fits the interview questions and fits, I mean, it's, so there's a part of me that feels that certainly when we saw the permanent ED, that I'm going to want to sit down with that person and share. But that could also be an opportunity, maybe an open meeting to just come out and say, this is what I've heard collectively, not just from focus. So getting a lot of emails from people as well, so.
I will say though, if there are issues, I think we should wait until...
I don't, I, you know, I just need direction from people. I do feel like I've heard some things that are working and some things that are, people are very interested.
I would just say that a lot of times what districts do is when they have a focus group, the information that's collected, is selected briefly by what is the super tenancy, that's shared, what have they garnered from the focus group for information. If you folks choose not to do that, I, I'm, just to keep the integrity of the process, I think I would, I think it would not be, not be ethical for me to go through this with you if you're sharing information specific to what you garnered through the focus group with just me, if it's not going to be made public. If you wait till after the search is completed, but prior to that, I think it'd be...
I think there's, if there's stuff that we have learnings of as a community coming out of that that don't map into the job description, I think we should service it.
Yeah, it's tricky.
I just think if there's something that's broken, needs to get fixed, let's fix it. You know?
Do you think some of the themes or commentary that you, you were hearing is different than what we, what we have here and different than what maybe came out of the climate survey focus groups because of those as well? So I don't know, I mean, are, do, is it new feedback that we need to incorporate?
Some of it may be a little, and I don't mean to be so cryptic. I mean, I think again, some of it for me is, it's color, you know?
It's discussion, it's conversation.
Yeah, it is. And we really, we took that and we probed and probed and probed. And so maybe it's just that we digest and think what we want to do. But I just, I want to make sure that if we start to pick an area and go, I think it'd be great for me to have some type of avenue to weigh in and just add some time. Maybe not huge revelation, but there's some color.
I mean, I think also we've heard again and again that people don't feel heard. And if people spoke to you, we don't want that to be a dead end of information.
You gotta order the time.
I, I certainly felt that when we saw the person, it's great opportunity to sit down and walk through. But I, it just, so, there's so many connections to this. It's good work, I mean, so many connections.
Might there be an opportunity to present it to a committee between, I mean, to present it to the board? We're talking February. Is that okay? Or if it's more urgent than that?
Well, I think if it's urgent, if there's problems to be fixed, as Scott said, let's surface them. If there's color commentary and you want to honor the work and allow the board to absorb it from a presentation style, I think February is okay.
And then anything that you think is timely, you know, that shouldn't wait too long.
Certainly no, like, safety issues or things like that. But I, I mean, I, you know, the school things are going and...
Well, there's insight. I think we gain insight from focus group searches like that, just like the culture and management practices.
So I don't feel equipped to make that final decision though. So who, maybe there's somebody I could talk to or share some of?
Yeah, we can talk about it. So that we're making sure we're not compromising these circumstances.
So I would recommend that we post the results of this to today's meeting day. We don't have to wait until the conference. Are you, are you putting on a website? This and the open comments or just the...
Open comments are sufficiently clean.
I cleaned them, I couldn't even find my own.
Did you remember what you wrote?
No, that was a problem. I was like, I know, I took the survey.
I thought that was, that was good.
Oh, yeah, that one was mine.
Yeah, if they're, I mean, if they're safe.
I have, I mean, everyone, all the needs are locked down. Somebody wants to take an X or don't, you know, don't check.
Melissa, as you recall, you and I had this conversation last year about this time. We wanted to do this, we did not for various reasons of resistance. So I think it's a great new start.
So one, one question I do have though. I know names have been scrapped, but in some cases it, some comments point to individuals. And it's quite clear who those individuals are. I don't know necessarily, but people could figure it out. Is there an issue around that?
Yeah, there's only a couple of teachers doing flip classrooms as an example.
As an example, department, et cetera. So I don't know if there's issues around posting specific comments and then...
Did you get rid of just...
Regarding faculty particularly, I think that crosses the line a little bit.
Yeah.
Regarding faculty, you know, and I just, I'm not that comfortable about that.
Because people could feel targeted.
Absolutely, that's a lot of things.
I, I think we could also gender neutralize pronouns on some of the things. Like instead of, you know, some of the comments will say he, and he just went through and said she or...
This is proper English, I believe.
I have a grammatical problem using the plural pronouns or the plural plural. But I, I realize I'm not, I'm sorry.
So we've created work.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's just, okay. Do you guys think that we should...
Would they point to a specific staff member that is not administration?
I think that's pretty wise, just to do with this. I think that, I don't, I think that we can, you know, we're technically, we must make these available on demand if someone asks for them, we must provide them. But I don't know that it adds value to post this and it is on the left.
Well, we were, we were wondering.
But if somebody requests them...
If someone, right now, if someone requests this, we must, we must provide it because we use it in the meeting. But we do not, it is not a requirement for us to post this on the left.
But the question is, is it valuable?
Does, does it add, yeah, that's one question. Does it add value to the parent community, to our, all of our constituents, if it is on the left?
What does the "if" you're referring to?
The comments.
The detailed comments.
It's always been, from a, from a perspective, I've always been against having the open comments available just because they're very personal to what people, that they, because you read in timeline who the teacher or person that you talked about is. And it maybe discourages people from commenting again and...
But that was the question that we were talking about, is do they need to be cleaned some more?
But, but I think it goes beyond that, right? Even if you clean them more, do you get them clean enough? I think there's, so I'll just sort of say, I think there's a risk on many levels to posting these detailed comments. I think to your point, they, they can be available to those who need them on request potentially. I don't know if that means you want to request them and then we can visit cleaning them further. But I, I would hesitate to post them as is. I think they, they are needed as we resolve the issues for people, you know, among us and the administration and whatever. But I, I think there's a lot of risk. Because even, even you can read backwards. Who, for example, some people complain about an, a individual may be complaining about another individual. They asked them for something, they did not get it. Now, the person who's being complained about knows who made that complaint about them.
Oh, yeah, somebody asked me for syllabus and I didn't get them and now I'm going to tell them.
So it works both ways. So I think there's, you know, it's risky.
The comments are just treated sort of like the consultant did, right? You know, took all that information, but then, you know, just like, like you've gone here for this page, there's the snapshot. There's everything that you need to know. Because so long as, trust, you know, you captured those comments in themes, I think we can see it. Even looking at, but not necessarily a lot of surprises from ongoing things that we've been hearing again and again. So I would say I would be very cautious about anything you could, could point to anybody or could need to some retaliation or any other things that you might, we don't want to set somebody up for.
Mike?
Well, we just rolled out a employee survey for 50,000 people and I also, and we keep the comments aside. It's really, it's back to that term, it's insight and color. And if somebody asks for it, then we will put something together. But I think you did a great job summarizing this report. I read the comments and I felt that your summary told us a very good story about what was reflected. And I, I will start there and then I think if there's a, the way our approach is of just big uprising, then we'll revisit it. But I think it's a good start.
Everybody pretty good with that?
So I will post this.
Anything else? So Pauline and I will be working on the agenda for the January planning meeting. If you have suggestions, please. Oh, yes. I'll finish my thought. If you have suggestions for a January planning meeting, please send them over. And we'll, we'll get a draft agenda out in a bit. And we're going to talk about progress.
Again, I'm not sure why it's important to be... But I think at the last meeting, we, I asked the questions in terms of what were our plans for a faculty survey?
Should we do it?
Should we?
And when? And should it be any different?
But we ran out of time, so I, I think it's important that we do do it. But determining what, what survey actually goes out, I think at some point, a couple of meetings where we discussed, do we take the questions that Diane wrote and just reissue those questions? Because that was...
Why don't we just hurry up and find a third party? Yeah. Not do another.
Sorry.
That's reassuring.
Yeah, I was thinking that too. I just do this, that, that's my task.
What did you think about that, Jess?
I, I think the third party is a good idea, I think about that.
Well, I have to measure of security.
Yeah, in fact, if you won't like that.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Because I think that's been our challenge all along, like how...
Trust.
Yeah, how, how do we actually get the information without...
Yeah, I mean, it's the safety and the benchmark issue. Let's not limp anymore, let's just...
That means it doesn't go out for a while, but...
Right.
Who's in charge of that?
I was listening, yes. No, I have two people to contact, actually.
You circulated that.
Why, and then I have another...
Oh, you got other stuff?
No, somebody, but they've sent it to us.
Is, is just using Diane Hammer as a, as the third party, is that like a reasonable... She has that later?
No, she doesn't do that. She doesn't do that, okay.
And in fact, one of the things we want to do is we want to make sure we use a third party that does this, that's kind of their business, because then we can get benchmarked.
Okay. So will we do, we'll do only one faculty survey this year?
I think our, yeah, I'm talking to her, I think our, our next task is to select a probe to do the faculty survey, third party firm, and we can run on our schedule once, once we get, once we get a firm in place.
And I think it's going to take a while for any changes that we were expecting to see to register anyway. Because if we get information from the faculty tomorrow, it wouldn't be that helpful, it wouldn't be that different.
I think the timing also could be connected to the collective bargaining. So how people feel before or after could change, so that could affect it.
All right, any, any other business for the evening? Or we go into executive session? So if there's a motion to go into executive session to discuss any litigation, it's a bargaining. So we'll accept that. Scott links motion, does that sound acceptable? Chris, we'll go to a roll call, but we will not reiterate the public session.
Just for clarification, is it just collective bargaining? You said also about pending litigation, I just want to know if it's mine.
Uh, pending litigation, it's probably...
I think the pending litigation is short, right? Yeah.
It's, it's probably invited.
Yes.
See, would you invite it for the pending litigation?
No, we can do that. All right, so we'll take a roll call. Michael, are you up for it? No? Rick?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Pauline?
Yes.
Melissa? Motion was, yes.
We also need to state that it would be detrimental to discussing the session.
Oh, so we'll be discussing matters detrimental to the case?
Same, same wording as last time.
Okay.
I'll say.
Okay, fine.
No, they suggested Melissa, Jess?
Jess, yes.
Jess voted for yes, and it could be...
I'll make notes that she's not there for the litigation.
We'll reclose ourselves from the collective bargaining.
Thank you all for...
I should make mention, even though they didn't vote, they're be attended.
Yes.
All these people.
All the more definitely will be attended.
Yes, that's right. Yes, correct. That's good.